Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council Meeting. The council thanks you for being part of the city government. At meetings, the city council takes formal action on items, holds public hearings, and conducts other business of the city. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-w.gov/agenda, and they might be in the back of the room as well. This meeting is being televised live on PSC TV Channel 191 on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and go-to webinar. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. And with that, can I get roll call votes? Councilmember Brown?
Present.
Compost?
Present.
Milne?
Here.
Roach? Ms. Roach is excused. Thank you. Serrano?
Here.
Mayor Protem Maloney?
Present.
And Mayor Barajas?
Present.
And with that, would you please join us for the Plage of Allegiance? Thank you.
Mayor Barajas, I would like to make a motion to reorder the agenda. I move to amend the agenda to move item 11, new business, before item four on the agenda.
There's a motion? Can I get a second?
Second. Go ahead. Second.
Seconded by Councilman Campos, so we will be moving... I'm sorry. There's a motion. There's a second. Do you want to do this by roll call vote, or all those in favor say aye? Councilmember Milne?
Yes.
Councilmember Serrano?
Yes.
Councilmember Campos?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Maloney?
Yes.
And Mayor Barajas? Yes. It was unanimous. Thank you. That was unanimous, please, so we will move it... So, new business item council is, item number forty, resolution number forty-three forty-three, appointing Adam Lincoln, Adam R. Lincoln, as the city manager and approving the employment agreement with Adam R. Lincoln for the position of city manager. And Mr. Ferguson, there's our report.
Sure, just real quickly, we all are pretty aware of what's going on, but this time, this is the council's opportunity to, based on our ability to enter negotiations with Mr. Lincoln, after having started the process of seeking a new city manager, so with the negotiations have concluded, and this is the council's opportunity to formally offer the position to Mr. Lincoln, and offer to enter into the agreement and appoint him as your next city manager.
Thank you for that. Does council have any questions or comments? And I do see some lights. Councilman Brown?
Just a comment to just say, so far it's been a pleasure working with you, and I believe that we made the absolute right decision for the City of Pasco, so congratulations to you.
Mayor Protem Maloney? Councilman...
So, I'll go ahead and make a motion. I move to approve resolution number forty-three forty-three, appointing Adam R. Lincoln as city manager and approving the employment agreement for Adam R. Lincoln for the position of city manager.
There's a motion? Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilman Milne, when you have a comment?
Yeah, I just, more for the audience, for those of you who haven't been following along, city manager is a very important part of how our government works. This is a pretty important night for not only Mr. Lincoln, but all of you who reside in Pasco, and so I'm just pretty excited that we have a large turnout here, for whatever reason you're here. Hope that when all this pomp and circumstance is done, we give him a big round of applause. So, that's all.
Thank you for your comments. There's a motion and a second, and you have comments as well?
I'd just like to add to that, you know, when we put out a requisition for the job, we had nearly two dozen applicants, of varied talent level, skill level, depth, experience, literally across the country. I recall, I think Missouri or Mississippi was as far... We didn't get quite across to Mississippi, but we got up to it. And it shows that, one, there was a desire for people to take this job, or at least explore it, and, two, again, these were talented people. It wasn't like someone like myself, underqualified, just jumping in at it and saying, "Make me the city manager." These were, these are very talented people, and we deliberately selected to offer Mr. Lincoln an interim position, and that allowed us to continually assess his skill set, and we found that he is meeting the needs that we have. Now, certainly, if y'all listening, watching, participating, have any questions of what, or think that there's something we could do better, we're welcome to hear that, but as the single reportee to the city council, I am very confident in Mr. Lincoln, and having gotten to know him over the past two years, even despite the COVID restrictions, et cetera, I have full faith that he will exceed the expectations and meet the needs of the city, which is, you all know, is extremely, it's growing, it's blowing up, things are crazy, and he's having to manage a lot of things, new staff. My hats are off to him, and, you know, thank you, Adam.
Well, I do have, just before the motion, I do have one other comment. And again, goes in line with everything what everyone else has been saying already. You know, thank you all for being patient. It's a process, and thank you for trusting the process. And here we are, finally, with the candidate that we were hoping to have. I do look forward to continue working with you. I do appreciate making time for council to meet with you on a personal basis, just to check in on, see how things are going with the city. So, again, thank you. So, we do have a motion, and one more comment.
Yeah, I just want to say that it's also been a pleasure having him over at my house, and we've been able to chat on and off, and, again, I'm excited about his dynamic personality, and looking forward to good things for him to lead Pasco in the next, hopefully, ten years, and, again, really looking forward to his leadership.
And another comment from Mayor Protem Maloney?
Thanks, well, we're all weighing in. You know, I think that's one thing I want to add on to my fellow councilmembers' comments is, you know, we've had an opportunity to really get to know Adam over these last few months, and really see where he's at. And I think one of the most important parts for me was trying to understand how is he going to handle the personnel dynamics. I think he's got, going to have immediately four positions in the executive team that will, that are either in under active recruitment, or are, or will need to be, go under recruitment soon. So, you know, I can't say enough to the fact that, in addition to everything else my fellow councilmembers are saying, his ability to look at and how to approach forming a strong team was really something that I really value, and I think he's shown his interest and willingness to take a look at that, and not necessarily give you hold into how we've done things in the past, and look forward to the future of how we can, how we can do this right for the city. So, that was a big deciding factor for why I will be supporting this resolution we're about to have voted on.
Any further comments? Okay. We see no, hearing no for the comments. There's a motion, it's been seconded, and now, actually, I'll get a roll call vote. Councilmember Milne?
Yes.
Serrano?
Yes.
Campos?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
And Barajas?
Yes.
It is unanimous. Thank you. And with that, congratulations. Well... And, Mr. City Manager, if you would please come to the lectern so we can take your oath. All right. Would you please raise your right hand? I, Adam Lincoln?
I, Adam Lincoln.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Washington?
The Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And all local ordinances?
And all local ordinances.
That I will faithfully and impartially?
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform and discharge the duties of the office?
Perform and discharge the duties of the office.
Of the city manager?
Of the city manager.
For the City of Pasco?
For the City of Pasco.
According to law, to the best of my ability, so help me God.
According to law, to the best of my ability, so help me God. Thank you, Mayor and council. It's obviously a huge, huge honor to know that you have the faith in me to vote yes on this tonight. I greatly appreciate it. I know that you are extremely thorough in coming to this decision. I very much appreciate the work that went into this on all your behalf. I also really want to thank my family for their continual support in my career path. I know it's extremely disruptive when the profession requires you to move somewhere else to take a position that you hope you'll be considered for, and their support and effort to be there for me has been amazing, so I love you guys very much. I also want to thank the Pasco community. I'm so excited for everything that's been going on just in my brief time here. I knew when I was doing my research on Pasco that there were a lot of big things that were, that were going on. Had no idea the other great projects that I'd get to be a part of, some that we'll talk about tonight, Broadmoor Dairy Gold was one, Amazon, the great legislative work that you've all set the direction for, and obviously, as was mentioned, we have an amazing staff. We're really a team, and a growing team, and I'm very much excited to help select the next team members in a lot of those critical positions. I'm also very appreciative of everyone who has intentionally become a public servant and chosen to work in municipal government. I can't think of a better profession. It really is a great thing to do. If you want a job that allows you to work with a diverse group of people on topics that are changing every day, then local government is the right path. Again, I'm very honored by your selection. It's, you have no idea how impactful it is. I'm on cloud nine right now, so I really thank you for putting your faith in me, and I hope to support Pasco and everything that's going on here for as long as I can, so thank you.
Thank you. So, do not walk away. I'd like to invite your wife and your family to step forward, and we will be taking a five-minute break, so if you want to take pictures with our new city manager, you're more than welcome to. Congratulations, Adam and family. Okay, thank you, everyone. Again, congratulations, City Manager, Adam Lincoln. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Item four, Consent Agenda. All items listed under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the city council, and will be enacted by roll call vote as one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If further discussion is desired by council members, the item may be removed from the Consent Agenda to the regular agenda and considered separately. A, Approval of Meeting Minutes for April 3rd and 10th. B, Bills of Communications to Approve the Claims in the Total Amount of $6,398,679.14. C, Resolution Number 4337, Bid Award, East UGA Expansion Sewer Local Improvement District Number 152, Phase 4. D, Resolution 4338, Pasco Public Facilities District Inter-Local Agreement. E, Resolution 4339, Lewis Street Overpass Change Orders. F, Resolution 4340, Amendment Number Three to Consort PSA for Construction Support Services for the Wastewater Treatment Plant Improvements Phase Two Project. G, Resolution 4341, Professional Services Agreement with HDR Incorporated for Construction Management Services for the Wastewater Treatment Plant Improvements Phase Two Project. H, Resolution 4342, Change Order Number Twelve for the West Pasco Water Treatment Plant Phase One and Budget Amendment. I, Approval of Letter of Support for the Confederate Tribes for the Colville Reservation Pasco Project. And with that, can I get a motion?
Mayor Barajas, I move to approve the Consent Agenda as read.
There's a motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Serrano, and can I get a roll call vote? Councilmembers Serrano?
Yes.
Campos?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Milne?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
And Barajas? Yes. And it passes unanimously. Thank you for that. Moving on to our next item on the agenda, item six, Public Comments. The public may address council on any items unless it relates to a scheduled public hearing. This item is provided to allow the opportunity to bring items to the attention of the city council or to express an opinion on an issue. Its purpose is not to provide a venue for debate or the posing of questions with the expectation of an immediate response. Some questions require consideration by council over time and after a deliberative process. With input from a number of different sources, some questions are best directed to staff members who have access to specific information. Citizen comments will normally be limited to two minutes, in this case because we do have a full agenda, full council chamber, controlled by our clerk. She will advise you when you are fifteen minutes, fifteen seconds to your two-minute call. Those with lengthy messages are invited to summarize your comments and/or submit written information for consideration by the council outside of formal meetings. And with that, does anyone in the chambers wish to address council? If so, please raise your hand, wait for me to address you. When you come to the podium, if you could please state your name and address for the record. Gentleman in the hat here at the...
Point of clarification, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
This is for items that are not scheduled for public hearings, so we haven't opened the public hearing for some of these items yet, and so, for... So, for example, if people wanted to comment on any of the vacation rideaways, or on the comprehensive plan amendments, we would be waiting for comment?
So, to the public hearing, there's one public hearing scheduled for the street vacation, and that would be the appropriate time for that matter. There is another quasi-judicial matter on the agenda this evening that has received a public hearing at the planning commission, or, excuse me, in front of the hearing examiner, so there has been an open record hearing, so it would be inappropriate to take public comment on that item as well, I believe, unless Mr. White has any other knowledge that I'm not aware of. I think at this point, you can take public comment on other items that are on your agenda, but with regard to quasi-judicial matters, that would be problematic.
Could you translate that into English, or are we in the same language?
Yeah, I was about to ask the same question, so I appreciate that. Mr. Ferguson, could you be specific on your agenda items as to which items, I believe, if I understood correctly, eight? Item eight, of course, is a public hearing, and then you said that which item has been, has a public hearing at the hearing examiner?
Sure, so the current item under eight A is a, that has a public hearing, so it would be inappropriate to take a comment during this portion of the agenda. The, and you can, you can obviously take testimony at that point for that item. The other items, folks that are not on for a public hearing, those could be spoken to, but there is a concern with regard to the other quasi-judicial matter that's not marked on the agenda, with regard to, I believe it's item nine B? Thank you, Rick. And that is a quasi-judicial matter, so that's an item where the, as we've talked about multiple times, where the council sits in a role as a judicial officer to make a decision on the rights of a particular proponent. Now, with that being said, the proponent can come up and speak to the, to the item that they spoke at the hearing that's already taken place, but under the rules for public hearings, that, that item has taken place at the planning, or in front of the hearing examiner, so it would be inappropriate to take further testimony. That record is closed.
Just, just a quick comment. It seems that people online are not able to hear the meeting, and I don't know, Gina, is there anything going on to where we're muted for public on, online? Either way, it will be worked on, so if you're not able to hear, follow the comments, we're working on it.
You had a comment? Yeah, I want to try to translate this into plain English, too, right, so I understand. Is, so what I'm picking up is if there was a, there was already a public comment, a public hearing, if somebody has already made a public comment, they can address at the podium, if they've, no, if they've already added to that comment?
So, it's a little bit of a nuance, and, again, I'll take any assistance from Mr. White here, because this is obviously his realm with regard to how this is applied to this particular land use section, but my understanding of how the quasi-judicial process works when an item like this comes before council. The item was properly noticed, the, in front of the hearing examiner, there was a public hearing held there. There is a state law that requires that only one public hearing be allowed. At that point, the record becomes closed, at that, the record is, is an open record hearing in front of the hearing examiner. That's when that testimony can be taken, folks can make any comments that they feel that are important to the subject. At that point, then that record becomes closed. It gets transmitted to you, it is, because it is a rezone, and it gets transmitted to you, and you can only consider what is in the closed record. Now, you can have a closed record hearing and discuss that amongst yourselves, but taking new testimony at this point would be inappropriate for the closed record.
We have a question from...
Well, I think, why don't we just allow regular public comment on the general safety around Court Street now and in the future, and maybe it's, and you can have your, you can leave that closed, and we'll just make general comments related to the public safety on Court Street, and you can refer to it however you want. We'll just do that in the general public comment, actually.
No, I, that would be disingenuous to think that the point, the reason for the comment is to not affect that matter. We're not going to be able to make that distinction, so if, I'm just giving you what I, what I think is the best way to approach it. So, I think it would be inappropriate to take public comment on that matter at this point. If there was an opportunity, it was properly noticed, the record's closed. Madam Mayor?
So, per direction from our council, from our legal council, comment on an item that has been already closed will not be allowed. Thank you. So, if you do have a comment, if you do have a comment not related to any of the hearing items, or closed hearing items, then... If you can turn on your microphone.
There we go. Regarding the Court Street, West Court Street development, and it's pretty clear that you didn't follow the proper procedures of notifying, notifying people that are impacted by this development. You've notified people within three hundred feet, which basically means nobody was notified.
So, your comment is in relation to the case that we just mentioned? So, your comment...
He's saying that it's closed, because you've, you've adjudicated and decided... He's saying that it's closed, because you've, you've adjudicated and decided.
Oh, can you hear it? Okay, I'm Selena Savage, and um, it's not, has nothing to do with that de- development. But we own the twenty acres right next to it, and we were notified at the public hearing, we made comments and all that stuff, that was fine. But we were not notified when the city actually rezoned or planned to rezone our property into medium to high density residential. And put it in their comprehensive plan, which affected our property on the river, the twenty acres that we have on the river directly. So, we weren't even notified about that. I don't know where it went, but I, we talked to the city, and we've been talking to the city, and it's been great, and um. So I just want to let you know that sometimes the city might think they notify people, but they really don't, so.
If you can please state your name and address for the record.
Well, I don't know the address because it's a farm, so it doesn't have an address, but we are at the very end of Court Street. Um, and right next to Riverside Estates, my name is Selena Savage, and we did do the development at Riverside Estates, the twenty acres there. But we have the twenty acres that's um, east of cour- of Riverside Estates on Court Street. And then east of us is this development that everybody's talking about that's going in, um, so we do have the twenty acres right there. Along the river, so, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen?
Yes, hi, my name's Aaron Richardson, uh, my wife and uh, our seven children, we live on Court Street between Road one hundred and Road one eleven. Uh, we've lived in Pasco for almost twelve years, um, I just wanted to make a general comment about the safety of that area along Court Street and with regards.
Sir, again, your comment is in regard to an area, a situat- a case that was already mentioned that we are not accepting. Mister Ferguson?
Yes.
Can we allow these comments?
I'm sorry?
Can we allow these comments on the record?
If if the comments are meant to prejudice the decision that's going to come up in front of this body later in the meeting. Um, or influence in any way, that would be inappropriate. So, it, there was a properly noticed hearing, um, there was an opportunity to make any of those comments when the record was open. That record has subsequently been closed, and so.
Thank you.
Mister, Mister Ferguson? It's someone on the, the council, and and I could say, I know what's, a lot of my neighbors are talking about is, again, the racing, I don't think we're talking about. I mean, I, I can understand the nuance of the the nine A or the nine B, but. Again, what I wanted to bring up and what I've talked to a lot of my neighbors is the racing that's going on, I mean, literally, on Thursday night. I was literally half a second away from getting nailed because somebody flew through the intersection, I mean, again, it was the worst experience of my life when. You're riding a motorcycle and somebody just goes flying right through the stop sign, and again, had I been in a car, I would have slammed into this guy, and again. Problem is a lot of the racing, and so I know when I've talked to some of my neighbors, it just so happens that it's on the same time, but I mean, again. There is an issue of racing and a lot of people were trying to say that, hey, what can we do to stop this in the area? I mean, Pasco PD cannot be there all the time, and so I think, you know, when we're talking to some of the neighbors, they're saying. You know, could we come and talk about issues of, you know, the car speeding and, and this is, and I think that's. What Mister Richardson was, was talking about, and again, I know it kind of, but it also seems to be very nitpicky when so many people have taken time out of their nights. To be here, and again, had, had it just been another half second, I mean, literally, I missed the guy about four inches. And I moved off the road, so I mean, again, it's, it's very frustrating to me that it's just gotten worse and worse. And so I think that's why a lot of the neighbors were wanting to come about what can we do for this development, for this area. Uh, you know, as far as to get traffic coming in different ways, we know traffic is coming, we know this area is coming in. But I think that was the whole case, um, of just the concerns, and is that not able to talk about concerns, I mean, I just don't understand.
So, if if there are concerns related to traffic safety citywide, if there's concerns related to um. Particular incidents that folks want to speak about, that that obviously, you know, you know, as long as those aren't obviously connected to the development. I think um, it's, it's pretty disingenuous to think that the reason why people are here to talk about that particular item. And then talk about these other things isn't meant to have an effect on that. My job's to give you legal advice, I, my advice is to not take comment on that particular matter, the record's been closed. Obviously, if council wants to proceed and do that, that's, that's council's decision, but um, with regard to the law, I feel like it's pretty clear. Uh, there is an opportunity, uh, it is, it is noticed, not not necessarily each person, there's a certain amount of people that get notice about the potential development. But it's, it's a public record, it's on the agenda, it's, it's put out on the website, so there's, there's opportunity. Uh, for folks to have made those contributions and if, and and now unfortunately, uh, under the law, you're only allowed one particular public hearing. And so any of those contacts uh, related to that are in a way to add to the record. And at at this point, which would be inappropriate, that's my opinion.
I, I would challenge that because really at any.
Mister Ferguson?
Sir, sir. You've been muted, sir. Mayor Perdoloni, your comment.
Yeah, Mister Ferguson, um, and council, I would, I would like to suggest that we, we adjourn into executive session to discuss uh, with legal council about. Current or potential litigation for RCW forty-two dot thirty dot one one zero one I for the next ten minutes.
Sounds good to me.
Um, but do we need a motion for that, uh, Mister Ferguson? So I, I'm, I move to enter uh, executive section for discussion of legal counsel. About legal risk of current or proposed a- action for RCW forty-two, uh, one one zero one I for ten minutes.
There's a motion, can I get a second? Seconded by uh, Councilman Campos, so we will be in executive session. All those in favor so, for the motion, would you please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
The motion passes.
So three, two, and pass. Thank you, so we'll be in executive session for the next ten minutes to return at seven forty-eight, thank you.
At this time, council has returned from their executive session. We do have a need to extend for another 10 minutes. We will be extending to seven fifty, to eight o'clock. Thank you. And council is back from executive session. Thank you again, everyone, for toning it down so that I can speak at this point.
Can I make a comment? I'd like to propose that in a couple of weeks, we have a listening session so we can have all the constituents hear their voice. This really isn't the format, but I would like to have two weeks where we hear everybody, give them time to talk and express their concerns, road safety, all the different things that I'm passionate about and you guys are passionate about as well. So I would ask in the next few weeks, be put on social media and we'll do what we can to hear everybody.
City manager?
Yeah, mayor and council, if, yeah, if it would help, I think what staff can do is convene a listening session to have a holistic conversation about road safety in general in the city of Pasco. I think there's plenty of issues that have been brought forward, not just tonight, but, but over the past several weeks in regards to the safety of pedestrians, safety of bicyclists, safety of other drivers. So we can present some, some statistics from a public works and public safety perspective. We can certainly talk about some of the practices that we're, we're going to be implementing and, and take several, several comments so that we have a better picture of where the community stands on this topic as well.
Thank you very much. With, with that, ma'am?
I know that the city had, had their, their meeting on this particular property, but they also mitigated-
Ma'am, I'm gonna have to interrupt you, so- This will be discussed at the listening session that we will be scheduling for everyone to speak at in two weeks, correct, city manager? Thank you. We'll, we'll bring it back in two weeks. Thank you. So with that, with that, I will now open it to the chambers to make, if you have any comments not related to this subject, please raise your hand and wait for me to acknowledge you so you can step up to the podium. Gentlemen here with the orange vest, if you could please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is Julian Jensen, address of one eight, one six, West Twenty-Eighth Avenue in Kennewick. Good evening, council members, city leaders and fellow residents. I'm, as I said, I'm Julian Jensen. I'm a representative with the Southwest Mountain State's Council of Carpenters Local Fifty-Nine. I'm here to make comments on the Lewis Street Overpass. I'm a taxpaying and voting resident of the Tri-City since 2007. I actively engage with the community and do all I can to make this an even better place to call home. At last week's workshop, the project manager for the Lewis Street Overpass gave an update to which I wish to comment. A couple of items regarding the general contractor for the project Cascade Bridge. This is a non-local contractor utilizing their non-local workforce. They're performing many of the work scopes on this project. Simply stated, a large portion of our community wealth is going elsewhere. This contractor is not a registered training agent. Cascade is not recognized by the state to train apprentices. Yet this project comes with a fifteen percent apprenticeship utilization requirement, meaning fifteen percent of the total hours for this project needs to be done by apprentices enrolled in state accredited apprenticeships. The project currently stands at four percent through the use of subcontractors. My question is, why were they even allowed to bid? As the general contractor, Cascade is responsible to make sure the project reaches its threshold and should not be excused from this requirement. I have visited with the superintendent of the project multiple times to inform him that we have a local, ready-to-work, skilled workforce, which includes apprentices, some of which are here tonight with me. Low bidders on public projects commonly underbid those projects to get the work with the intention of making up the difference through change orders. Might I remind council that this project has already had seventeen such change orders and the contingency fund is almost exhausted with work left to go? I'd like to offer an option. The Southwest Mountain State Carpenters Local Fifty-Nine has contractors who are state accredited training agents. These contractors have the design-build capability and the highly skilled and trained local workforce to get the job done safely, on time, and with the highest quality.
Fifteen seconds remaining. Fifteen seconds remaining.
Our local contractors and construction workers should be building Pasco and our local apprentices should be getting the invaluable on-the-job training. It's an investment in our infrastructure and our workforce, and this investment pays dividends long after the project is completed. Cheaper is never the best option and therefore should not be the only option, and I ask that it's now time for responsible bidder language for all future Pasco projects. Thank you. Might I also add congratulations to our new city manager and our retiring Mr. White.
Thank you. If you have your contact information, you could leave with our clerk. That would be great. Thank you. Go ahead, gentleman in the black shirt. If you could please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Juan Flores, six twenty-one Madrona Avenue in Pasco. So I'm Juan Flores. I'm thirty-eight years old, born and raised right here in the city of Pasco. I'm a carpenter apprentice for the Carpenters Local Fifty-Nine out of Tri-Cities. And speaking again on this Lewis Street Overpass project, this project was awarded to a company out of Western Washington, not a local company. This project could have been awarded to a local contractor and kept us busy and given us the privilege to become more knowledgeable in constructing bridges. And also, and I speak for myself and for my, for my fellow union apprentices back here, they're outstanding. And one more thing, city preaches about keeping the money in town. I am a firm believer of that. However, setting the example on, on that matter would be something I personally would love to see. Let us have that pride of helping expand the city of Pasco and the ability to tell our, our future generation how we helped build some of these projects ourselves. Thank you.
Any other comments? Start here in the yellow vest, and then we'll pass it to this gentleman back here on the left.
Council members, my name is Joshua Davis. I live at eleven seventeen Willard Avenue in Richland, Washington. I'm currently married for four years and I have two little kids, three-year-old and one-year-old. Before, I used to work in retail, and then I got married and I realized I could not support my family on that income. So I went to school to go into software engineering, pretty much to learn to code. One of my family members works in that field and said I would have to get a master's degree. So I would have to spend fifty thousand dollars and possibly get a fifty thousand dollar entry-level position with about two hundred other applicants across the country applying for that. So I had to go for a different plan to support my family, and when it's the trades. I've been in the trade union for about two years now as an apprentice, and I've been looking for work in Tri-Cities and I haven't been able to get any that's more reliable and long-term. And I've been looking for work in Tri-Cities and I haven't been able to get any that's more reliable and long-term. So I've had to travel to Oregon and Umatilla area. So during that past couple of months where we had that awful weather, I was a victim of that, ended up in the ditch and wrecked my car, even though I was going fifty miles an hour. So I was out a week. And then we had the snowstorm. I couldn't get over the hills. Unlike a typical contractor that has a four-by-four pickup, I have a little Corolla hybrid. I mean, that's what we need. So what happens in Pasco matters to me, even though I am a resident of Richland. What happens in Kennewick has a direct impact to me as well. And it has an impact to everyone in the union because we are local. We do want to stay in the Tri-Cities. We do want to work here. We do want to stay here. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a gentleman here on the left. If you'd like to step forward.
My name is Jerry Roach and I live out on Court Street. And this is not about factual issues relating to the question that you're going to address later this evening. It's about a procedural issue, and that is the question of appropriate notice. Under our constitution, anybody who is entitled, or anybody is entitled to due process, and that requires appropriate notice. Living in that neighborhood since I was thirty, so forty-one years, it would have been appropriate for me and all of my neighbors to have received notice that there was going to be a hearing and it was going to be a final hearing if that's what this is bound to be eventually. It's completely inappropriate. It's unfair. You, as trustees of this city, owe the people who live here more than that. I'm simply asking you to keep that in mind when you do this in the future. You can do whatever you do as to this matter, but in the future, it would be appropriate to not disenfranchise the people that are living here by not giving them notice of something precipitous that's going to happen in their neighborhood possibly. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make a comment? Gentleman here with the hat?
Hi, my name's Bill Warren. I live in South Twenty-Sixth Avenue, five fifteen. I have a few comments. First one is according to Webster, mayor means chief executive officer of a city, a town, or borough. Or chief officer of a corporation. But you got out of that. Previous councils decided that they didn't want the mayor sued. So they elected a representative called the city manager. He's the GOAT. Anything you do, and he messes up, you got escaped of. You don't get sued. That's a nice comfortable position for people who have to make decisions. But my challenge is to our new city manager, okay? It's very apparent that the people who work in this building think they are the city hall, think they run things. You've got to get those people to understand that they work for the citizens of Pasco.
Sir, if you could readdress your comments to the council as a general.
Okay. But it's important that he get it across, those people draw a paycheck from the city of Pasco. But they are not the city of Pasco. Your job is to teach your staff how to be as efficient as possible so that they can help the people in the city of Pasco. We have rules. We have regulations. Those rules adopted by the council, accepted by the city government, including-
Sir, again, if you could address your comments to the council chambers.
Well, my comments belong to him.
Correct.
Okay? I see no reason why I can't direct him. You're listening. You can hear what I'm saying.
Sir, you have five minutes, five seconds left.
Problem is, the people don't realize the people that work here draw a paycheck from the city for services rendered.
Sir, your time is up.
A carpenter or sheep rottmeister.
Sir, your time is up.
So please direct your people to serve the city of Pasco.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Are there any other comments? There's a hand right here and then a lady back in the back.
Good evening, staff and council. Thomas Grandbois, Big Maple Properties, one oh eight North Fourth Avenue in Pasco. I'm here to speak about something that's near and dear to my heart, and that's the Pasco Business Advisory Council. I'm not sure, I know several of you had the opportunity to attend the meetings that were sort of informal meetings of local business members where we were able to talk about issues and actually have action items that have been completed within a year and a half year. And it's, it's been a pretty amazing process. And unfortunately, as you know, Mike Gonzalez is no longer with the city. So I, I really hope that the city takes time to participate in those meetings again. A few of the great examples of what we've done, I know it seems like a small potatoes was, but was, Mike was able to get garbage cans in downtown Pasco. I mean, we all thought that that was impossible. And somehow Mike managed to get that done with the encouragement of the, with the encouragement of the Business Advisory Council. Another thing that, that Mike did a great job of interfacing with the local businesses was, was purchasing the Thunderbird. We've heard many, many years that that's impossible, that they can't do anything with that. And thankfully, there was a lot of work with city staff through Mike and, and the local businesses and encouragement through them to, to get that purchase completed. And of course, with, with your blessing at the end of the day. But we've noticed a huge decrease in negative activity in that area. Another great win that we had as well, in my opinion, was changing the C-two zoning to be more inclusive, to allow more business types in the area. When comments from landlords were that, well, we can't attract the kind of businesses that we, that we want. Or from businesses that wanted to have those activities, they were told, oh, we can't, this can't be done until the master plan gets approved. And well, it's, it, we were able to get a coalition of local businesses who normally wouldn't talk together, talk to each other, actually get together and, and push this forward. And I really hope that city staff makes the time to, to come out and, and participate in those meetings. It's my understanding that they're being started back up again, but I think it would be a real disservice to the city of Pasco and especially the downtown business owners if the city doesn't participate actively with the local businesses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Marla Marvin. I'm with Save Our Shoreline and I am here to talk on a new subject. I'm sorry, I'm sure you're sorry to hear that. But, um, but we have, uh, this evening you are dealing with a couple of different things. Something that Zach will be introducing, the Parks Master Plan. And then you'll have a lot of amendments on the comprehensive, comprehensive plan. And one of those has to do with Broadmore, actually several of them have to do with the Broadmore development. And we know that, that you have to get the Parks Plan done. It's an amazing plan. There's an awfully lot that went into that. We, many of our members submitted comments and it was really professionally done. And I know that Save Our Shoreline is most interested in a new, large park across in the vicinity of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers natural area. And we want to work with existing landowners and we also would like to relocate that shoreline drive eastward and make that part of the Sacagawea Heritage Trail, bike pedestrian only. Then that protects that core land in its natural state. And then we purchased through willing, from willing sellers, land on the other side for a park of some size. And I'll, I'll conclude with, I, I gave the city clerk a map that you all received kind of late in today, and it just compares what's currently proposed for the Broadmore development and what, what Save Our Shoreline would like. And it just, it might be in your packet. If you want to have these hard copies, I have them for you so I can give them to the city clerk. And yes, I'm seeing a couple nods.
She'll spread them out for us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Last thing is we would hope to have an opportunity on one of your workshop days to talk about our vision as you, as all these plans continue to move forward. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any other comment? Gentleman here? In the front? Thank you.
I'll try to pretend this actually works for me. So I'm Pete Reiki, ninety-one oh four West Hoover Street. Thank you, councilmen and women, for entertaining this tonight. I'd like to speak about my efforts to work with Zach on the Parks Master Plan, which was a wonderful experience. And I'd like to thank him and his staff for that, that plan. But as you heard from Marla, there is a lot of work to do and there's not enough people to do it. So what I really wanted to encourage you to do tonight is consider forming a really true parks department. You now have a nascent parks department. You need to aggregate that together, get it under a unified leadership so you can address the problems of the parks that you have along your shorelines and your shoreline master plan as well as the development of parks within the Broadmore area, like the park that Marla just, uh, just suggested here. So I guess my message is, we really do need a parks department in the Tri-Cities. There is in Pasco, Washington, here. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any last comments?
Madam Mayor, I do believe we have an electronic comment for public comment this evening.
Can you call that person? I do have-
Yeah, it's Robert Carrasino for matters of the parks as well.
Mr. Carrasino, are you connected?
I believe I am. Yes. Thank you. Thank you, council members. I, I also submitted a written comment related to this subject and I, I will try and be brief. I've spoken to you before about the dire need of the city to begin acquiring a park in the new area of Northwest Pasco. And I believe that that expectation should be included in the current Parks and Recreation Master Plan. I have proposed to you some language that would allow you to either defer approval of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan until such time as the administration has the time to include a request for a recommendation for such a park along the river. Or if you need to approve it today, I suggested some language that would allow you to approve the plan with amendment to the goals section of the plan to include a recommendation for a new major rivershore-related city park to be developed along the riverfront in the urban growth boundary areas south of Burns Road. And therefore, you could approve Resolution forty-three twenty, adopting the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-eight Parks Recreation and Open Space Master Plan as modified by that amendment and further instruct the city manager and staff to begin work to implement the plan and its recommendations. I and several other members who are interested in this subject did meet with Zach Ratkai and he appeared to indicate he was interested in this idea and was supportive of it, but simply didn't have the time to amend the written plan before it was being submitted to the city council. And I don't want to hold up that effort unnecessarily. And so I've included some language that could allow you to approve it tonight with the amendment to the plan being made as part of that approval. I sincerely hope you'll consider this. I've given you a fair amount of information in the past about the benefits of planning ahead as well as the dire consequences of not doing adequate planning and beginning siting and, and acquisition of land for such a park. I, I also support the concepts discussed by Marla Marvin earlier tonight. Thank you very much. And I would be happy to ask, answer any questions you may have either now or later on when you consider the, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Also, I reside at one thirty Terrace Drive, Pasco, Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Carrasino. Are there any other online submissions, online comments?
We have people online, but I don't know if they've submitted a formal request to comment, so.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make a comment?
I'm just proactively asking, how can we be assured when the next meeting-
If you can step, please, to the microphone here. And if you can state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Maria Rosen Roach. I'm just asking when we can be proactively notified when the next meeting will be.
You mean specifically to the, the traffic component?
Yes.
We'll post several notices on social media to make sure that it is well, well-publicized and it'll be on the, the city's website.
So how can we be notified if social media is not our way?
You can also sign up for notifications on the city's website.
So city, city of Pasco's website, if you sign up for notifications, you should be getting a notification of any upcoming events or meetings happening.
Okay, so the city of Pasco website.
Correct.
So I would like to pass that on to my elderly friends. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to have, make a comment?
So a clarification. Could you give that to me, the city of, city of Pasco website?
Sure. It is W W, here, let me go back. It's W W W dot Pasco dash wa slash- Pasco dot G O V. So W W W Pasco.
Can you write this? I don't have pen and paper.
Do we have a-
She can contact me. I'll give her my business card, ma'am.
If you can contact our city clerk, she will give you, she will email you any information you may need.
So how will you notify me? I will give her my email?
Correct. If you can give you, give her a phone number, an email, some form of contact, she will send you instructions.
If you write it down and say that you'd like to have, be notified on notifications, just give me your contact information and I'll call you.
You're pointing this way.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Stephen Bellman. My business address is thirty-one thirty Barney Lane here in Pasco. I respectfully ask that in item on the agenda number nine, that you discuss Comp Plan Amendment twenty-two dash zero zero three, which is not in, in series with the remainder of those. It's the last one shown in item number nine. Would ask that you would have a discussion about that item. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move on with our, thank you. I'm on the timer too. Seeing none, no other comments, we will move on to our next item on the agenda, reports from comedians and/or offices, officers. Did any of our council members attend any events, public activities, meetings that you wish to share updates with the rest of the council? Councilman Compos?
Madam Mayor, I have a very brief one. I just, I saw today on LinkedIn Heather Hoppy, Hop, with Delta High School is looking for placements for, I think, job shadowing for juniors at Delta. They're looking for people in like business administration. So I just thought that if any staff from the city reach out to Delta High School and was able to host juniors for job shadowing, I think that'd be a really good opportunity for, for those who are willing to learn or want to learn about what the city does would be a great opportunity.
Great. Thank you for sharing that. Any other council members wish to share anything? Councilman Milne?
Yeah, I did attend the Arbor Day this, last week and it went really well. Planted a whole bunch of trees and had a lot of people from whether it be the Parks Advisory Board, the forestry. Adam Lincoln was there as well. So it was, Dan Doda, gave a good, good talk. And we had a lot of kids there as well. So it was, I thought it well-attended. So it was, uh, I thought a well-attended event and good to be part of that. And then of course, all that you talked about, Catholic charities today, so.
Thank you. Do you want to add, um, and say thank you for stepping in for me for Arbor Day? Last year I did a lot of digging, um, and I did not get paid extra. I'm joking. Uh, can you please tell me the name of the group of kids that attends every year to plant trees?
Boys and Girls Club, uh, local chapter, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Um, again, thank you for, um, stepping in my place and doing the digging. Um, I do want to share that, uh, let me see, Friday, um, I was a speaker at the Charter College, um, uh, graduation ceremony. So there had hundred and fifty students graduating. Uh, Charter College has been, was established in nineteen eighty-five, um, there in five different states. So again, congratulations to all the graduates. Uh, Catholic charities, uh, Councilman Meloni was there with me today. Uh, they had their ribbon cutting, open house, um, and tours of their new facilities. If you've not visited their facilities, just down Sylvester and Twentieth, I encourage you to take a tour. Louis, thank you. Uh, Louis and Twentieth, uh, I encourage you to take a tour. Um, they have sixty units and about half of those units, uh, are already occupied. Um, again, in coordination and partnership with, um, our fire department, police department, and several services throughout the city to offer assistance to these individuals, um, that are moving into this facility. Um, and just a heads up, if anyone is available, Wednesday, council members, we will be having a small delegation from the consulate of Pasco Peru. If you're available, um, and would like to tag along, um, they will be visiting our beautiful city. Um, and that's all I have to add. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on with our agenda into item eight, hearings and council action on ordinances and resolution, resolutions relating thereto. Uh, we do have a quasi-judicial public, quasi-matter. Public hearing and ordinance number forty-six forty-eight, Empire Brothers Construction Right-of-Way Vacation. Uh, Director White, do we have a report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and, and council. This item concerns a vacation proposal for streets and alleys in an area just, uh, on the south side of Helena Street, east of Heritage Boulevard. And it's, uh, quite a bit like the vacation that council just entertained several weeks ago. The applicants are asking to vacate the outdated street and st-, uh, alley rights-of-way in this very, very old, uh, plat from the early, uh, nineteen hundreds and reconfigure it into a, uh, plat meeting current development standards. Um, although we have not yet received the plat, uh, this hearing, of course, will be incorporated into the findings when it appears before the hearing examiner. And at this point, staff would recommend council's approval of the proposed vacation ordinance.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that report. Uh, do we have any questions or comments from council members?
Since it's quasi-judicial, yeah, I'll just run through the script real quick. Um, quasi-judicial hearing is, is a hearing, uh, to render a final decision on materials that are presented. Uh, it is defined as a proceeding in which the council defines the legal rights, duties, or privileges of specific parties in a hearing or other contested proceeding. The appearance of fairness doctrine applies and the hearing must be fair in three respects, form, substance, and appearance. All council members should consider whether they have potential conflicts as follows. A, a demonstrated bias for or against any of the parties. B, any direct or indirect financial interest in the outcome of the proceeding which would affect the council members personally. C, whether there has been any prejudgment of the issues prior to hearing the facts. D, whether there has been any ex parte contact with anyone other than staff prior to this hearing. And E, any other conflict which a council member believes would prevent them from hearing this matter fairly and impartially. If any council member has any of these concerns or disclosures, now would be the time to make them known. Hearing none?
Any disclosures? None.
Okay, hearing none. Uh, are there any members of the public seeking to disqualify a member of council from participating in these proceedings? Seeing none, please proceed.
Thank you. And with that, I'll open it to council. Do we have any questions or comments, uh, of staff? Hearing or seeing none, um. This public hearing is now open, so I'll allow, um, comments from, um, anyone in the public. If anyone has a comment, please step forward and state your name for the record.
Good evening, council. Stephen Baumann. Just wanted to, uh, point out to you, thought it may be helpful. Um, I represent Brochi Orchards LLC, next door to this, and the Jubilee Foundation. And this is virtually identical to the action that you recently took on our behalf, next door. And, uh, as neighbors, we would be supportive of this action. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Third and final call for comments? Hearing none. This hearing is now closed. Um. Can I get a motion?
Yes, Mayor Barajas. I move to adopt ordinance number four-six-four-eight, vacating portions of right-of, rights-of-way in Wa-, in the Washington addition to Pasco, in the vicinity of East Helena Street, and further authorize publication by summary only.
There's a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second, uh, by Councilman Pete. Are there any additional comments? Hearing none or seeing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And it passes unanimously. Thank you for that. So moving on to our next item on the agenda. Ordinances and resolutions not related to hearings, um, ordinance number forty-six forty-nine to forty-six sixty-three, approving the twenty-twenty-two comprehensive plan amendments. And again, Director White?
Thank you again, Madam Mayor and council. And of course, uh, council has seen this item many times now, uh, at both workshops and at, uh, public hearings, which were conducted about a month ago, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, Mr. Jacob Gonzalez, our planning manager, will run through, uh, these items very quickly just to make sure council is fully aware of where we left off at the last, uh, at the last, uh, council workshop.
Uh, good evening, uh, mayor, members of council. Um, as Director White mentioned, this is an item that's been shared before, uh, several times. Uh, a-again, wanted to, uh, point out that the comprehensive plan amendments are allowed by state law once per year unless considered an emergency. There are no emerg-, emergency, uh, emergencies considered, uh, for the twenty-twenty-two docket. The evaluation criteria as established and adopted by city council are on the screen. There's also additional considerations, uh, for factors that shall be, um, considered for each particular amendment. Um, but I think one of the, the primary points is not only the con- consistency with the factors listed on this screen and the prior, but certainly the, um, uh, the concurrent review of, of all of these as a cumulative effect, uh, with regards to Pasco's comprehensive planning. So with that, um, staff wanted to share essentially two screens with you this evening. One would be those that were privately initiated applications. You can see those on the screen, uh, before you. Um, staff, uh, is recommending, uh, based on the criteria and, uh, the, uh, material submitted on behalf of each application, uh, the recommendation of all except CPA two-zero-two-two-zero-three. We discussed that a little bit further. Um, I did want to call out in particular, um, item CPA twenty-two-two-zero-eleven. That did have some comments from council in prior meetings. I don't have a map for you this evening, but this is the amendment application that would propose, um, uh, to switch the land, amend the land use from the current commercial to high-end city residential located on Court Street and Twentieth Avenue. Uh, staff did look into that, um, into the zoning of that, uh, in that area, in particular because of existing use of the facility to the immediate south of the site of interest here. Um, there's a current commercial, uh, facility there, uh, and there was, uh, significant restrictions actually placed on that business, uh, on the zone, uh, when that was approved by council several years ago, I think in twenty-fifteen perhaps, um, that restricts the use of the site to the south, um, to, uh, 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 essentially prohibit, uh, heavy commercial, light industrial uses, heavy auto, uh, uh, freight-based uses, noise, uh, et cetera. And so, um, on top of, um, staff's evaluation that the proposal itself merited, um, consistency with the criteria, the restrictions placed on the south, uh, the southern business and the southern re-, uh, zone, uh, staff certainly feels that it still is, uh, worth a recommendation of approval this evening. So we did want to call that one out specifically. In addition to comprehensive plan amendment, uh, two-zero-two-two-dash-zero-zero-three, this is with regards to a, uh, roughly hundred ninety-seven acres, hundred ninety-six acres, an amendment, um, located on, uh, uh, A Street, uh, from industrial to mixed residential, commercial. Council is aware that this application has a pending environmental impact statement associated with it. Uh, the completion of that, the issuance of a final environmental impacts, uh, statement is still pending and due to that pending nature of that environmental review, staff is not going to, is not recommending either an approval or denial, and instead would recommend that, uh, that item be allowed to continue and placed automatically on the twenty-twenty-three docket, which is nearing, um, closure and our, uh, new cycle, um, until the environmental review for that application be complete. Now want to, uh, briefly discuss, uh, the city-initiated applications, which you see here. Obviously, a lot of discussion regarding, uh, the recent adoption of downtown Pasco Master Plan. The, uh, amendment associated with, uh, zero-one-three, the, the first item listed on your screen, um, seeks to expand the boundary and also, um, uh, keep some of the, uh, uh, flexibility associated with the central business district and essentially create a downtown, um, uh, downtown Pasco land use, uh, that we could then work with, um, with our D P D A, our downtown business community members and neighboring, uh, residents, uh, to tailor a specific development regulations and zoning that is custom to our downtown and central business district area. And that, uh, uh, amendment did receive, um, letter of support from our downtown Pasco Development Authority as well. Um, obviously, zero-one-four, a very significant item for the City of Pasco, uh, with the Broadmore Master Plan and also the Broadmore Master Plan E I S. That, uh, E I S was issued last month. Uh, there were no, um, uh, appeals or, uh, comments of concern that were raised after the issuance of the F E I S. Um, the E I S associated with Broadmore, uh, accommodates, um, well over a hundred very specific mitigation measures, uh, with regards to, uh, transportation planning, uh, parks planning, uh, de-, very specific development regulations to ensure that when projects are proposed, that they meet, um, the, uh, established development regulations attached, uh, to the staff report to ensure that the end result, um, uh, yields the, 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 the type of development that both council and community members have expressed is what we'd like to see, um, in the Broadmore area. Um, I do want to call out, along, along with that, is a lot of discussion on parks, um, and open space in that area, um, that we did revise, um, uh, the parks and open space area in the alternative two, uh, which was considered in the E I S versus the, uh, existing alternative one. A lot of the open space in alternative one simply was not going to be feasible. We also felt that some of it was placed on areas that weren't truly, uh, representative of what they would be in the future, or at least for the near future. Um, this is an area that is intended to be, uh, ten, fifteen, twenty-plus year timeframe. So, um, staff, um, expects to be back in front of council numerous times over the next several years, consistently refining and making sure that the development regulations associated with Broadmore, um, are adaptable and, um, feasible and meet the, the vision as expressed by, um, several community members and obviously this council going back, um, to the early two thousands. Um, but regarding park space, um, there's roughly sixty-two acres of allocated park space right now in the Broadmore Plan, um, including a roughly twelve to thirteen acre site that, um, is adjacent to the shoreline. Uh, in addition to that, there's also forty-four acres of neighborhood park space and forty-six acres of community park space that would be required, uh, when staff, uh, conducts a CEPA review of each project. So those acreages would be on top of what we have allocated today and also on top of what, um, uh, implementation of the Parks and Recreation Open Space Plan yields as well. Um, zero-one-five, zero-one-six, and zero-one-seven are map corrections. That is essentially correcting an efficiency in our zoning and comp plan and fixing that error. And then, uh, zero-one-eight is a, a minor update to the land use table descriptions that are, um, entitled, uh, twenty-five, um, associated with the comprehensive plan. So, uh, very short summary of the, uh, comprehensive plan docket for twenty-twenty-two. I can say, um, although I haven't checked with other communities, but, um, uh, this amount of, uh, the entirety of the amendments being proposed today represent a very significant change, um, uh, for the City of Pasco, um, but also implement various elements of the comprehensive plan, land use, housing, public facilities, parks, recreation, open spaces, transportation, economic development, et cetera. Um, and, uh, we are excited to, uh, present these to you this evening, um, and look forward to likely a much shorter docket in twenty-twenty-three. So, thank you and happy to answer any questions I can this evening.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any questions, uh, Mr. Gonzalez? Uh, yes, Councilman Serrano?
Mr. Gonzalez, when will that, uh, twenty-twenty-three come forward? It will actually appear in calendar of twenty-tw- twenty-four?
Correct. Um, uh, we are only allowed to do one amendment per year, so, um, part of the, uh, I think the, uh, the, the length and the amount of amendments associated with the twenty-two, twenty-two docket are associated with, um, with the fact that the city, outside of the major update, uh, that was adopted a couple of years ago, there have not been amendments to the comprehensive plan since twenty-sixteen. So we're dealing with some, some appetite here for changes to the comp plan. Um, right now, we have one, uh, application, uh, in for twenty-twenty-three and likely a second with, uh, the zero-zero-three item.
Yeah, so we should hear early twenty-four then?
You will likely see a workshop, um, but not a decision, a recommendation in twenty-twenty-three for the twenty-three docket.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mayor Pretend Meloni?
Thank you, Mayor Barajas. Uh, one area, uh, Mr. Gonzalez, I want to focus on is for the downtown, um, downtown resolution. I noticed that there is, is an ordinance as well, um, specifically amending the PMC. Is that part of the, uh, expected approval tonight or is that a separate matter that's a draft for us to be aware of that's coming forward?
That is, that is part of the recommendation this evening, so that. Yeah, she turned it off. That's part of the recommendation this evening is, uh, amending, uh, that ordinance to establish the downtown new, uh, the downtown land use and begin implementing, uh, several of the initiatives associated with the downtown Pasco Master Plan.
So, cause specifically this is in to, to, um, well, say, update the central business overlay district into a downtown Pasco overlay district. Um, and it makes some, some pretty significant changes to this. And I just don't remember having seen a draft version of this before, so I just, so I guess this is our venue to have a little bit of conversation. So if we haven't, if I, if I've seen it before, uh, my apologies for, for my neglect on that. Um, the only area where I, I have, I, I want to make sure I understand is the overlay district will cover the entire map of the restructured downtown as recommended in the downtown master plan, plus it looks like three hundred feet beyond those borders. Is that accurate?
That's correct. I, I think one of the things we learned, um, early on, um, in the downtown Pasco Master Plan process is that some of those lines are, um, how were they delineated? And this gives us an opportunity to ensure that if I'm across the street, um, from a property that receives, uh, uh, maybe more flexibility, uh, because they're within the boundary, that I also receive a similar, uh, flexible tolerance because I am functionally, um, in the same area. And so we wanted to afford that to neighboring, uh, developments, businesses, vacant properties, et cetera.
Great. So the, the follow-up of that, and, and I agree and I really appreciate that, let, let me finish one thought before we move on to the next. Thank you. I, I appreciate the thought that went into that. Um, when I'm looking at development standard, here's the, here's the part where I'm, I'm trying to consider rapidly, um, in the course of this meeting. Um, there's a portion where it's, we, where it is added to it to say, um, the downtown Pasco overlay district shall exempt from the following, she'll be exempt from the following. A, off-street parking requirement, uh, per, of PMC twenty-five dot one-eight-five, and B, density threshold requirements of PMC twenty-five dot two-one-five dot zero-one-five. Can you speak a little more as to what the thought process is there for that to apply to the entire map?
Yeah, a-absolutely. So the current central business district, um, the overlay district, uh, i- is exempt from off-street parking. Um, I forget the totals, but I know that I shared with council earlier this year that, um, looking at only our retail, only businesses in that central business district, have they been required to provide the current requirements for off-street parking? I think we're looking at roughly thirty-eight acres of parking itself, which essentially means you have room for parking, but no room for the actual business that folks would like to visit. Um, so, uh, we are, uh, uh, seeing that more and more central business districts, in fact, general communities are, uh, making the parking requirement itself much more flexible and let the business or the developer choose what the appropriate parking is. And that's, uh, what that exemption would allow. Um, the density threshold would help us with, um, encouraging more housing in our downtown area, particularly with, um, the underlying zoning that is still appl- Particularly with the underlying zoning that is still applicable. Until those are changed, those are still the zoning that will apply to the parcels and properties within the boundary. The removal of the density maximum allows, in tandem with the off-street parking exemption, really allows the development to have quite a bit of flexibility. To do something that works for the neighborhood, works for the city and providing necessary housing. And removes, I think, from a staff perspective, restrictions that have been barriers for a very long time to new growth, particularly with regards to housing in central Pasco.
So just to explore that a little further and and my apologies again for not having seen this before to be able to approach these questions a little bit offline here. So when we're talking about the density requirements, wouldn't that provide a disincentive to rezone your property? For example, if you can, if you're in, if there's an R one or, I believe there are some some R one housing within the three hundred foot buffer around this map. Then someone could functionally build just an apartment there without having to change it from this R one? Or what would, what would still be encouraging them to make the zoning change, which is of course what we want long term?
Well, the the height restrictions will still be in place along with lot coverage, lot size setback requirements. And if there is a project that does want to include parking, that takes away from the developable area as well. All those on top of the, I I think, replace what we would need and rather than having a density maximum or density restriction. Letting the form factors, setbacks, height, lot coverage. Regulate the form of a potential new project or redevelopment of a project. Provides a little bit more flexibility for the for the project that we may see. Rezones would still be permitted, but I think this is the next step of taking the amendment further is the implementation of that. Which would coincide with developing the necessary standards so that we can have that right zoning in place that makes sense for the central business. Central downtown Pasco overlay district.
All right, I appreciate that. And I think the last last comment I will make and and I'm very interested in a follow up on, I don't want to hold up this item. I will, I I do support this and would like this to move forward. My concern would be with the off-street parking removal, especially in certain areas that are immediately adjacent to single family residential. Is that we may end up in a spot where we have, we have a lot of commercial parking in low-density residential neighborhoods. And my concern would be that flowing out a little bit from there could be disruptive, especially when we're looking along some of the redevelopment that's happening along fourth. And areas like that. So I'd be very interested in maybe staff helping me understand how we can make sure to protect the residents in that immediately. You know, adjacent from that from again, the flow out into residential neighborhoods as opposed to commercial. Which is kind of what the the C two zoning was or is. That parking, the lack of parking, off-street parking requirement was really only a very few blocks right in the center of this. And this is now expanded to a much larger area. I'm worried about unintended implications of it. So I'd like to have further conversations about that, discussion with, to understand what the ramifications are of that.
Certainly.
And the only other thing I'd say process wise, thank you, Mr. Gonzalez for this. Process wise is, I might recommend that we go through item by item. And before I make a motion is perhaps entertaining any comments from the, from council or from the public if there's any specific comments on on this. But I'm just weighing that out to to council to see if, make sure if people have an opportunity to be heard one last time on these ones.
If I may just want to mention that this was not advertised as a public hearing. But just wanted to throw that out there.
Understood. And there would not be one required for for this. We'd be just receiving some feedback on a legislative matter if I understand correctly.
That's correct. This is a pure legislative matter. Does not require a public hearing. You could take public comment if you'd like to tonight, but that would be up to the chair.
Will accept public comment. Thank you. With that. We'll call out our first motion, Mayor Protim.
If we want to hear public comment, do we want to hear after the motion's been made, or do we want to hear public comment beforehand? Because I think typically we'd be restricted of public and comment until to just council.
So let's open it to public comment beforehand and then we'll do the motion. You're right. Ordinance number forty six forty nine, adopting the Broadmore Boulevard and Burns Road or the C P A twenty twenty two dash zero zero one. Do we have any public comment on this item in particular? Seeing none?
I move to adopt ordinance number four six four nine, adopting the Broadmore Boulevard and Burns Road, C P A two thousand twenty two. Dash zero zero one, future land use amendment to the comprehensive plan of the city of Pasco pursuant to the Growth Management Act, chapter thirty six dot seventy A R C W.
There's a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Serrano. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say, uh, say nay. And it passes unanimously. Next item is ordinance number forty six fifty or C P A twenty twenty two dash zero zero two. Any comment from public on this particular item? Seeing none? Can I get a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance number four six five zero, adopting the West Argent and Route sixty eight, C P A two thousand twenty two. Dash zero zero two, future land use amendment to the comprehensive plan of the city of Pasco pursuant with to the Growth Management Act, chapter thirty six dot seventy A R C W.
There's a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Milney. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And it passes unanimously. Moving on to our next item. This one here. We are ordinance number forty six fifty one, adopting C P A twenty twenty two dash zero zero four. Do we have any comment on this particular item? Seeing none? Can I get a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance number four six five one, adopting the Broadmore Boulevard, C P A twenty twenty two dash zero zero four. Future land use amendment to the comprehensive plan of the city of Pasco pursuant to the Growth Management Act, chapter thirty six dot seventy A R C W.
There's a motion. Can I get a second? Seconded by Councilmember Brown. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And it passes unanimously. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is ordinance number forty six fifty two or C P A twenty twenty two dash zero zero six. Do we have any comment on this particular item? We do have a gentleman here.
Good evening, council. Peter Harpster with Oktari Engineering, address is twenty eight fifteen St. Andrews Loop, Suite C. I spoke a few weeks ago and just wanted to make mention that regarding our application throughout this whole process over the last year. So there's only been, I think, two comments from Mayor Protim Maloney and Councilman Roach. Both of those were addressed, and so we were just asked this evening for a decision of approval. And just want to thank Mr. Gonzalez and staff for their coordination with us over the last year. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Any further comments from council, questions? Hearing none? Can I get a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance number four six five two, adopting the Burns Road between Convention Drive and Ocho- and Ochaco Lane. C P A twenty twenty two dash zero zero six, future land use amendment to the comprehensive plan of the city of Pasco pursuant to the Growth Management Act, chapter thirty six dot seventy A R C W.
There's a motion. Can I get a second? Seconded by Councilman Brown. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And it passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, next motion on the agenda, forty, uh, ordinance number forty six fifty two or C P A twenty twenty two dash zero zero seven. Do we have any comment on this particular item from the public?
Madam Mayor, believe we just did that one between Convention and Ochoco. He said forty five sixty two.
We said forty six fifty three. Thank you. We're still awake. No comment on forty six fifty three or C P A twenty twenty two dash zero zero seven? Seeing none? Can I get a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance number four six five three, adopting the Wrigley Drive, C P A twenty twenty two dash zero zero seven. Future land use amendment to the comprehensive plan of the city of Pasco pursuant to the Growth Management Act, chapter thirty six dot seventy A R C W.
There's a motion. Can I get a second? Seconded by Councilman Milney. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. Uh, next motion is ordinance number forty six fifty four or C P A twenty twenty two dash zero zero eight. Is there any comment from the public on this particular item? Seeing none? Can I get a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance number four six five four, adopting the Chapel Hill Boulevard, C P A twenty twenty two dash zero zero eight. Future land use amendment to the comprehensive plan of the city of Pasco pursuant to the Growth Management Act, chapter thirty six dot seventy A R C W.
There's a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Serrano. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. Ordinance number forty six fifty five or C P A twenty twenty two dash zero zero nine? Do we have any comment in particular to this item? Seeing none? Can I get a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance number four six five five, adopting the Broadmore Boulevard, C P A twenty twenty two dash zero zero nine. Future land use amendment to the comprehensive plan of the city of Pasco pursuant to the Growth Management Act, chapter thirty six dot seventy A R C W.
There's a motion. Can I get a second? Seconded by Councilman Milney. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And it passes unanimously. Thank you for that. So moving on to the next one. Ordinance number forty six fifty six or C P A twenty twenty two dash zero one zero. Is there any public comment on this particular item? Seeing none? Can I get a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance number four six five six, adopting the North Twenty Eighth Avenue, C P A twenty twenty two dash zero one zero. Future land use amendment to the comprehensive plan of the city of Pasco pursuant to the Growth Management Act, chapter thirty six dot seventy A R C W.
There's a motion. Can I get a second? Seconded by Councilman Campos. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. Uh, ordinance number forty six fifty seven or C P A twenty twenty two dash zero one one? Is there any public comment on this particular item? Go ahead, step forward if you want to turn on the microphone, please. If you can start, turn on your microphone.
My name's Print Hauck. I live on Court Street, one zero zero one seven West Court, right on the corner of Road one hundred and Court Street. And I believe you guys went and met in council and decided that this this amendment, this motion. As well as motion sixteen should be tabled for two weeks.
It's not this item, sir. It's.
All these people have been waiting here patiently to make sure that that happened.
Yeah, sorry. My my understanding was the direction from council was not to table the items, but to have a separate conversation with the public.
Passing the resolution and passing the ordinance defeats the purpose of the public comments.
Yeah, I'm just speaking to the direction I had from from council. It's to hold a facilitated meeting with the public on the topic of of transportation safety in the city of Pasco. One of the areas that would obviously be a focus would be this this particular neighborhood.
If I may, if I may interject briefly, I believe, sir, you may be talking about item eight B, which is the Columbia Shores planned unit development rezone. I believe that might be the the topic. The one at hand in here, twenty two dash, or C P A twenty twenty two dash zero one one is. Northwest Court Street and Route sixty eight, and it's basically correcting an area where and where it's currently mixed between a. Commercial and a medium-density residential, and it's aligning those. So this.
May- maybe I'm misunderstanding what these items, because there's, you can't find anywhere on your website what any of these items say. Your passing ordinance is that nobody can figure out and understand. I've been, I've been looking for an hour.
It's on the agenda packet, sir. Were you able to grab the agenda packet from the back?
I have the agenda package right here.
Okay.
It gives me a number.
Correct. And so it it gives, it should show you a map.
Yeah, in in the larger packet online, the the link has the maps for each one of the projects. As well as the the specific. Ordinance for for each one of these items, and it would also include a a map of each each item.
So it's Route sixty eight and Court Street? Yes, and proven.
Mr. Gonzalez, if you'd like to clarify.
Yeah, sorry. Just just to clarify, this is a proposal associated essentially a map correction located at, as Mr. Maloney mentioned. Northwest of Route sixty eight and Court Street. There is actually an active transportation safety project going on right now at that intersection with the Public Works capital improvement project, so.
Do you have the map available?
I I do not available for this this evening's discussion. They are attached to the staff report in exhibit A, I believe.
So how how can we make sure that the gentlemen and public in general are able to see the maps that we're looking at?
We can pull up the actual agenda report as as part of the item that you have on the.
And there's some assistance.
From the website.
Thank you. He's getting some assistance on viewing those maps. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Are there any further comments on this item in particular? Seeing none? Can I get a motion?
Yes, Mayor Barajas. I move to adopt ordinance number four six five seven, adopting the West Court Street, C P A twenty twenty two dash zero one one. Future land use amendment to the comprehensive plan of the city of Pasco pursuant to the Growth Management Act, chapter thirty six dot seventy A R C W.
There's a motion. Can I get a second? Seconded by Councilman Campos. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. Motion or ordinance number forty six fifty eight or C P A twenty twenty two dash zero one three? Is there any comment from the public on this particular item? Seeing none? Can I get a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance number four six five eight to establish downtown land use and amend the.
Just a second. There's a question. Do you have a question on this particular item? So ordinance number forty six fifty eight or C P A twenty twenty two dash zero one three?
Related, related to downtown land use.
Do you have a comment on this particular item? If you'd like to step forward, please?
Thomas Granbaugh, one oh eight North Fourth Avenue, Pasco. I wanted to speak a little bit about that. Councilmember Maloney, I'd like to, thank you for your thoughtful comments on parking. I know that parking is always going to be an issue, and I don't know if this is appropriate to this or as a part of the downtown master plan. There are a lot of moving parts happening, but I think it's very important that parking be looked at holistically in the area. A great example right now and on fourth between Lewis and Clark. There's a, there's been an R V parked in the two-hour parking for over forty-eight hours, and I haven't seen a sticker on there. So that's that's sort of an example as to, you know, we need to put together a solid plan for parking. And another issue that's come up is, as you know, we have old buildings. And it was brought to my attention that one of the business owner or businesses that wants to move into one of those old buildings is having to do a tier-two traffic analysis. Which seems a little bit onerous. I don't know if if that should be addressed by this or by part of the downtown master plan. But there are businesses trying to move into these vacant buildings, but they're having to do these huge traffic impact analysis studies. When it's my understanding that we don't even have to pay traffic impact fees. East of twentieth. So I think that, I don't know if that's related specifically to this or part of the master plan. But I think that it's important that you guys are aware of some of the challenges that are being experienced in the downtown core. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez, do you have any comments for for clarification?
Yeah, with regards to the parking. Situation that 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 was brought up, parking enforcement certainly came up a lot. The enforcement of parking, the creation of a parking enforcement. uh situation that the that that was brought up, uh parking enforcement certainly came up a lot, um, uh, the enforcement of parking, the creation of a parking enforcement program, uh parking management program, uh certainly came up numerous times throughout the uh um uh the downtown Pasco master plan effort. Um, it's part of one of the strategies, and we look forward to presenting this Thursday um to the D P D A board of city staff, to the D P D A board about how we're working to implement the downtown Pasco master plan.
Thank you very much. Does that answer some questions or bring some clarity?
Yeah, regarding traffic studies, that that's not part of this discussion, that's a a separate issue.
Okay, thank you, um, so there's a.
Uh, I'll finish making my motion.
Thank you.
I move to adopt ordinance number four six five eight to establish downtown land use and amend the Pasco Municipal Code, chapter twenty five dot ninety five, central business overlay district, related to the twenty twenty two comprehensive plan docket and the downtown Pasco master plan, CPA twenty twenty two dash zero one three.
There's a motion, can I get a second? Seconded by Councilman Brown, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And it passes unanimously, thank you. Moving on to our next item, uh, ordinance number forty six fifty nine or CPA twenty twenty two dash zero one four. Is there any comment from the public on this particular item? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance number four six five nine, approving the Broadmoor Master Plan and amending the Pasco Municipal Code by creating chapter twenty five dot ninety seven, Broadmoor Overlay District, related to the twenty twenty two comprehensive plan docket and Broadmoor Master Plan, CPA twenty twenty two dash zero one four.
There's a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Serrano, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And it passes unanimously, thank you. Moving on to our next one. In between pages here, ordinance number forty six sixty or CPA twenty twenty two dash zero one five. Is there any comment from the public on this particular item? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance number four six six zero, adopting the Heritage Boulevard slash Ramgar Estates CPA twenty twenty two dash zero one five. Future land use amendment to this comprehensive plan of the city of Pasco pursuant to the Growth Management Act, chapter thirty six dot seventy A R C W.
There's a motion, can I get a second? Seconded by Councilman uh Campos? Yes. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And it passes unanimously, thank you. Moving on to next ordinance, number forty six sixty one or CPA twenty twenty two dash zero one six. Is there any comment from the public on this particular item? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance number four six six one, adopting the West Court Street between Nineteenth Avenue and Fourteenth Avenue CPA twenty twenty two dash zero one six. Future land use amendment to the comprehensive plan of the city of Pasco pursuant to the Growth Management Act, uh, chapter thirty six dot seventy A R C W.
There's a motion, can I get a second? Seconded by Councilman Milney, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And it passes unanimously. Ordinance number forty six sixty two or CPA twenty twenty two dash zero one seven, is there any comment from the public on this particular item? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance number four six six two, adopting the Tenth Avenue between West A Street and West Washington Street CPA twenty twenty two dash zero one seven. Future land use amendment to the comprehensive plan of the city of Pasco pursuant to the Growth Management Act, chapter thirty six dot seventy A R C W.
There's a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Serrano, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And it passes unanimously, thank you. And we're almost there, ordinance number forty six sixty three or CPA twenty twenty two dash zero one eight. Is there any public comment on this particular item? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance number four six six three, amending the future land use map descriptions in the Pasco Municipal Code, section twenty five dot two one five dot zero one five, comprehensive plan, land use density table, related to the twenty twenty two comprehensive plan docket and the Broadmore Master Plan, CPA twenty twenty two dash zero one eight.
There's a motion, can I get a second? Seconded by Councilman Milney, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And it passes unanimously, thank you, um. There's a motion, uh, let me see. Move to continue the e- evaluation of CPA twenty twenty two dash zero zero three to the twenty twenty three com- comprehensive plan amendment cycle per uh, the WAC one ninety seven dash one one dash zero seven zero. Do we have any comment on this particular item?
Good evening, City Council, my name is Stephen Baumann. Um, on behalf of Mr. Brochi and the Jubilee Foundation, I would like to respectfully ask that you would consider this as the planning commission did and uh as they did pass it tonight. Move this process forward as we have a housing crisis in the tri cities, and this is an opportunity to uh help with the process of alleviating that, thank you.
Any further comment on this particular item? Do we have comment from council? Councilman Serrano?
Yeah, um, thank you. Uh, as Mr. Baumann said, uh, we do have housing needs, and this this is someone who's partnered historically very well with the city. Um, so I mean, I'll expose that that weighs heavily into my inclination to move forward with this. Uh, the second element that makes me inclined to move forward, I I think we, I'd like a discussion about WAC section one nine seven dash eleven zero eight zero, which addresses incomplete or unavailable information, and it talks about where there are potential significant impacts and potential significant costs associated with procuring that information. It appears to me that that's kind of um an exception or or not, maybe not an exemption, cuz it certainly doesn't use that term, but a bo- at least a minimum, a borderline exception to the requirements of O seven O. A- and so my question is whether or not staff had contemplated that, and whether or not that was addressed, and whether or not uh, the E I S as it stands could move forward, recognizing that there may be some holes. Um, but they might cost an exorbitant or, I I mean, exorbitant is the word that is used in the code, so I guess my fundamental question here is is if we're adhering to O seven O, but there's room in O eight O, uh, did we contemplate that in the coordination and communication with applicant?
Yeah, I I guess I'll I'll answer the first part, then I'll pass to staff to the side here, is that the current uh version of the draft environmental impact statement does not identify that uh a potential um uh impact associated with the mitigation is cost associated with evaluating or determining what that mitigation may be. So that has not yet been identified in the current version of the D E I S. With regards to the other specifications of the Washington Initiative Code, I might defer to to Ms. Ferguson, please.
Yeah, so the WAC one ninety seven eleven, uh, as a prerequisite, uh, the uh a uh requirement under CEPO, uh, these these amendments have to go through that process, uh, and uh with that being said, uh, WAC one ninety seven eleven O seven O requires limitation on actions for CEPO process. Uh, Pren one states that until responsible official issues a final determination of non-significance or a final environmental impact statement, no action concerning the proposal shall be taken by government agency that would, and then it goes into and starts laying out some of the uh the uh issues that uh would would need to be addressed um in that F E I S. So what then, uh, and then when you look uh further along in O eight O, it talks about incomplete and unavailable information. And I think the uh, it is, it is a little confusing, but the one thing that I think is uh is very clear is that uh, these are not ex- uh exceptions, these are not, uh, there's nothing in here that exempts uh, in O eight O exempts uh the requirements of O seven O. What O eight O makes clear is that if uh, there are certain uh issues that cannot, based on those strict criteria of either uh no scientific knowledge or exorbitant uh cost, those could be addressed prior to issuing what we would refer to as an F E I S, the final environmental impact statement, so um, those are, O eight O is is a way to modify the F E I S. It is not a way to move forward without having had uh an F E I S, so at this point, um, the in the responsible official, in this case, uh, the C E D director, who's the CEPO official, uh, has not been able to issue an F E I S. Um, and so uh there is not one for this particular item, which would be a requirement, uh, condition precedent, uh, to move forward on that item.
And I appreciate that, I think um fundamentally, one of the questions that remains is whether or not throughout the process, O eight O was explored as as a way to coordinate some of the unknown information, uh, I think that still remains unanswered for me.
Do we have any other questions or comments from council? Mayor Patton Maloney?
Thank you, before I make a motion, I I I will say so, m- my understanding, if I if I understand, uh, Mr. Ferguson, what you said correct, what you said there is if we do not have a final E I S in front, uh, that city, that the city staff has issued as of right now, then it's illegal for us to move forward on approval or denial of this application's requ- applicant's request, is that accurate?
Yes.
Well, that makes it very clear for me, thank you.
Any further question, comment on this particular item? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
I move to continue the evaluation of CPA twenty twenty two dash zero zero three to the twenty twenty three comprehensive plan amendment cycle per WAC one ninety seven dot oh dash eleven dash zero seven zero.
There's a motion, can I get a second? Seconded by Councilman Campos, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
And we have one extension. Let's do a roll call vote, just to make sure we have the record straight.
All right. Uh, Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Milne? Councilmember Serrano?
No.
Councilmember Campos?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
And Barajas?
Yes. Thank you for that. Um, moving on to our next uh item. There's a request for a five minute break, um, to return at nine twenty eight. Thank you. All right, and we are back from our little break. Thank you, everyone, for allowing us the five minute break, so moving on to our next item on the agenda, which was ordinance number forty six sixty four for P P dash P U D twenty twenty one dash zero zero two. Director White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, this uh planned unit development rezone permit involves a project at at roughly thirty nine acres between Harris Road, Court Street, and Interstate one eighty two. The R three P U D uh zoning designation, which is an actual zoning designation in our Pasco Municipal Code, also uh coincidentally entertains projects, which this is. Uh, it's a project of roughly four hundred and eighty units, um, associated infrastructure improvements and various other uh items that conform with Pasco Municipal Code and Pasco Development Standards. The hearing examiner conducted a public hearing on this proposal back in March and has recommended approval subject to um, I believe, sixteen conditions on the staff report and numerous, of course, associated city standards and development um protocols.
Thank you, Director White, do we have any questions or comments from council?
Madam Mayor, if I may, uh, run us through the script real quick, uh, this is a quasi, uh, another quasi judicial.
This is like quasi, another quasi judicial matter. Uh, it is a hearing to render a final decision on the materials that are presented. It is defined as a proceeding in which the council defines the legal rights, duties, and privileges of the specific parties in a hearing or other contested proceeding. Uh, the appearance of fairness doctrine applies, and a hearing must be fair in three respects: form, substance, and appearance. All council members should consider whether they have potential conflicts as follows: A, a demonstrated bias for or against any of the parties; B, any direct or indirect financial interest in the outcome of the proceeding, which would affect the council members personally; C, whether there has been any prejudgment of the issues prior to hearing the facts; D, whether there has been any ex parte contact with anyone other than staff prior to this hearing; and finally, E, any other conflict which a council member believes would prevent them from hearing this matter fairly and impartially. If any council member has any of these concerns or disclosures, now would be the time to make them known.
I'd like to say that I have had communications with other people in this matter, so.
Thank you.
So, uh, in order to, uh, we, we need to know the nature of the substance of those contacts. Uh, you would need to disclose those, uh, and to be able to proceed. Also, if there were any other reasons by way that you felt that, uh, you wouldn't be able to participate via, uh, any prejudgment or bias, uh, that would also, um, this would also be the time to make those known.
Oh, in all honesty, I've talked to my neighbors. I have also put on a message online, which I've since taken down. And, uh, I have talked to people on email, so, again, I wasn't aware that this was a quasi judicial mistake, so I probably shouldn't be voting on this.
Hearing, hearing those, or do you, uh, still feel like you can, uh, proceed on this matter?
I know that, uh, we've talked about while at J R, coming on this, sir.
Yeah, I, I, so I have a floor, Madam Mayor. I, I don't believe that, given the circumstances, that, uh, Councilman Milne is able to represent himself impartially, and I'd ask that he be recused from this matter.
Thank you.
Considering what I said on, on my social post, I would agree with that, probably.
Okay, great.
Do we want to, oh, thank you. Thank you very much. You answered my question. Councilman Serrano?
Yeah, um, I too also field, fielded phone calls, uh, received emails. You know, my gut inclination was this was, should have been a judicial, quasi judicial. I didn't see it noted as such. My position is, I, I can't say that they certainly moved me, but it, I, I do feel like if I were to tip my hand towards no, they would have swayed me. So I think in the, all, all art of fairness, I should recuse myself.
Thank you. Mayor Petamaloney?
Thank you, Mayor Barajas. Um, in interest of disclosure, um, the only comments I've heard were today during public comment. Um, um, so I, I've heard some matters, but I think they, before this hearing or before this matter in front of us, but today during the council meetings, I believe, were generally recorded. So I believe I can still act fairly on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay, uh, and then finally, are there any members of the public seeking to disqualify a member of council from participating in these proceedings? Seeing none, please proceed.
Thank you. So we've received a report from, uh, Director White. Does council have any questions or comments on this matter? Hearing none, Mayor, oh, Mayor Petamaloney?
Thank you. Um, Director White, um, so when I'm, when I'm looking at this, this is, the, the zone here is already R three. Is that correct?
Yes.
So with R three P U D, um, does this increase the density in any way, shape, or form from the current, uh, density allowed in this area?
No, it does not. It just, it establishes development regulations for the proposal.
So a project-
Excluding density.
So a project of similar magnitude and traffic impact would already be allowed without coming for this body?
It, it could, yes.
So this, this matter here, um, as the hearing examiner, um, heard and the conditions put on here, I look, looks to be more extensive than most I've seen on any matter coming in front of us. This, I think she had seventeen conditions, sixteen conditions, which is a abnormal amount. Is that, is that accurate?
That, yes, that is.
So this looks like it has been considered pretty well. I know we ha, I have general traffic, safety concerns in this corridor and in others. Um, but as a matter of what's in front of us in this closed record, um, that has already been heard by the hearing examiner, um, and is presented in front of us, I think I have no further questions on that. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance number four six six four, rezoning parcels A and B of record survey number one nine zero three seven zero zero from R three to R three P U D, and further authorize publication by summary only.
There's a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Campos. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you. So with all members in chambers now, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, resolution number forty-three twenty, acceptance of twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-eight parks, recreation, and open space master plan. Do we have comments? Director Etkai?
Yeah, just, uh, briefly, um, this was seen previously by city council and presented at a workshop. Um, I think due to some time constraints, we got pushed to this evening. Uh, this is the Parks and Rec, Parks Rec and Open Space or Pro's Master Plan, which is a thirty-thousand-foot view of policies that will govern the implementation, um, design and placement of future parks, our maintenance standards, and staffing practices. Essentially, this is a framework. It allows for the planning of open space, natural areas, and developed parks. Essential to the planning for land use, capital budgeting, and general budgeting, this plan is non-specific to allow for changes once implementation occurs, including the new location of park lands, scope and scale of those parks. Um, factors impacting specific implemation, implementation include, but are not limited to, obviously, future budgets for land purchases, coordination with future development and subdivisions, and, and just the growth of our community, as well as capacity for maintenance and upkeep. There are a handful of essential policies in this document that will drive, um, what we would look at, codification through ordinance in the future planning of parks, namely, land dedication for parks and open space when development occurs, which is a high priority of staff and the community. Um, the minimum design standards for new parks, particularly if they are installed by the development community, and general maintenance and environmental stewardship. As you know, this is a pretty popular plan. Uh, we did have robust community engagement, uh, early on in the process, throughout the process, and the public comment period. Uh, we did have comments earlier this evening on the plan, including a proposed amendment as well. Um, the community, it just shows the community is excited about the future of our parks, and we're eager to put this plan into implementation, and staff is the same as well. Passage of the plan this evening is actually essential to keep the city of Pasco eligible for R C O grant funding in the coming cycles. Um, this was due last January, but due to the fact that we were finishing up the master plan and, uh, doing our implementations, the R C O office did grant us, uh, grant the city a, a little bit of extra time in order to get this process, uh, completed in its place. Understanding that parts of this plan, um, a master plan is meant to be flexible for a reason. We understand that it's longer term. Development can occur, financial can occur, you know, pandemics happen. Um, so situations may change, and it's intended to be flexible enough to allow for amendments in the future as desired and needed, proposed by the community and staff. Staff asks that this plan get approved as presented this evening, um, subject to the knowledge that future ordinances for land dedication and other priorities that have emerged from this plan will be presented to council in the coming months. Additionally to that, um, any amendments put forth by the community uh, for, uh, different designations on the parks map and the master plan uh, be worked through with the staff and presented, um, vetted through the Parks Advisory Board, and then brought back to council at a later date as well. So just a brief overbrush there, um, late in the evening, but I wanted to turn it over to council for any questions and comments. Thank you.
Thank you for your, for the brevity of your report. Do we have any questions or comments of council? Uh, Councilman Campos?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I want to thank everybody in the community who took their time to, uh, work with city staff on this. Mr. Ricky, thank you so much for your time, Mr. Carrisino, and, and thank you for, for your support on this. Uh, Mr. Ricky especially, uh, it kind of piqued my interest. I'd never been to the formerly known as the Richland Bend Habitat Management Unit, and I'd like to see more of our shoreline look like. I learned a word from you back in January of last year, riparian habitat. Riparian habitat, it's one of my favorite habitats. I'm sure his council is sick of hearing me say this. That's where turkeys live. So, um, I, I just, you know, I am very excited when I see concerned citizens who come with a solution and try to make this place as they intend it, as they want it. And I just, I, I just can't thank you guys enough for being those type of people. Our community needs more of you guys. That's it.
Any further comments? Councilman, uh, Mayor Petamaloney?
Thank you, Mayor Barajas. Um, I, I'll certainly echo the, the comments that my fellow council member, uh, Campos, had made there. But I just like, I guess I need an answer from staff on something. I'm, I've, we've been talking about this for a while, and I'm just, I, I'm, I'm feeling very lost and confused, and so I can only imagine how the community is feeling. When we went through the ma, the Broadmore Master Plan and we talked about parks and open spaces, I thought we said, they, I, I thought I was told then that, oh, the Parks and Rec and Open Spaces Master Plan will contain that level of detail. So I went, okay, then I won't look for it in this plan, um, and then I'll look for it in, in the Parks and Rec, uh, plan here. And then this plan in the agenda report says, no, it should really go back in the Broadmore plan or other plans like that. If, to be, to be specific, um, in the History of Facts in Brief, I believe it's where, where it covers it. Anyways, um, so I, I guess what I want to understand from staff is where can I expect a robust conversation about where we're going to talk about the shoreline, above and beyond just the Corps of Engineers land and other land that we, that already exists that we can't change and we're not changing by any of this? Um, that to me feels like the minimum. I want to hear something that's more than the minimum, and I just need to understand what the right venue is. If this isn't it, that's fine. I'm okay with this, but I need to know when and where.
I, I think to address future parks planning with more, I guess we could call it general specifics, because that's what the master plan is going to show. It shows in the Broadmore area four different park types to be located in that area. Now, those are just general bubbles of land. Um, they're not necessarily slated that in this specific corner, a neighborhood park would be placed. The actions of, uh, the proposals of the community, um, that's where it comes in to say, okay, we would specifically like to see a neighborhood park or a community park designated in this area on the master plan. That's where we're able to amend the master plan. Now, if we're going to start looking at specific meets and bounds land purchases, um, if we're going to look at, you know, a development that is going to have, uh, two thousand residents moving in, shell, and is required to dedicate, you know, five acres of land towards a park, that's where we would have subsequent, uh, workshops and specific ordinances to address those issues, to really get down into those details. So if we look at something where, um, like the amendment that's proposed, uh, through correspondence with city council, through meetings with city staff, um, actually, we will be meeting with, uh, the Save Our Shorelines Group tomorrow, Community Development, and myself be sitting down at three o'clock to meet with them, uh, to further discuss these details. That's when we bring that back for an amendment to the Parks Master Plan to just really kind of show those general parks in that area of the map. We get down to specific planning. Um, this, this plan would enable you to, would enable staff, would enable council, would enable the community to trumpet the fact, okay, we'd like to make a land purchase in this area on the basis of the master plan. That would come through in the C I P plan. If we're actually making a specific land purchase with a survey, that would come through with that process as well. Master plan is generally kept non-specific for that reason, to allow that flexibility and not bind ourselves, not bind staff, not bind future councils to specific parks and specific areas, but allows us that flexibility to address community concerns as we translate that to future parks plans, we translate that to purchases, we translate that to future ordinances for land dedication.
I, I appreciate all of that. Um, the one exception is, is, um, Commissioner Brad Peck likes to say, they're not making more river. We got one shot at getting the riverfront correct. Um, and that's where I, where, where above and beyond just neighborhood parks, where you're in a generally open area where, you know, the neighborhood park is, you know, geographically located somewhere else, that's, you know, that's, that's fine. It needs to serve the need, and they built the community. The river isn't moving. Um, and when we're talking about the river shore, um, and the parks along there, this continues to be silent on just talking about the simple fact that that, that doesn't move. There isn't any, there's no, like, general area there. It's right along the river. Um, and so when we're talking about that, I just, I, I feel like we're still very lax on that. Um, we're not, we're not, we're not clear enough, I think, with the community and with, with me as a council member as to what that looks like. So I'm not asking for amendment to their Parks and Recs, open plan, um, spaces plan. The plan in front of us, I think, needs to be approved as, as is. But I would very much like from staff, um, a, a more detailed layout for me where that is going to hit. I need that information to, um, as we're, as we're considering what, what to do, and how do I, how would we, do we, how do I be responsive to the public who's asking very cogent questions about, I, why, that they want to protect the park, the, the riverfront? And right now, I, I have nothing. I have nothing to tell them about when or how or what considerations we're, we're making though. So, um, I, I would very much like a detailed plan subsequent to this, understanding that, that we need to approve this as, uh, as we're in front of us.
Yeah, certainly. There's a number of goals and policies within the plan that specifically dictate riverfront, river access, so we can certainly glean that out, as well as access on the map. And then our discussions will save our shorelines to future land use appro, or future park appropriations planning along the river. We're happy to share that with council.
Great, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments from council members? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
I move to approve resolution number four three two zero, adopting the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-eight Parks Recreation and Open Space, um, Master Plan, and further instruct the city manager and staff to begin working to implement the plan and its recommendations.
I have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Campos. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to our next item on the agenda. Resolution number forty-three twenty-three, naming of new park in Madison Park neighborhood. Director Etkai?
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, this is one of the fun, very specific parks-related ordinances that we, uh, we encounter here. We have a long ago ordinance that outlined a policy for naming city parks and recreation facilities. A handful of names gets recommended by the Parks Advisory Board, and, uh, council gets to vote on what to name a new park. So with a little bit of that background and history, I'm going to turn it over to Recreation Services Manager Brent Kubalik to, uh, lead us through this.
Good evening, Mr. Kubalik.
Good evening, council, mayor and, and council. Um, thank you for this opportunity. Uh, again, as was stated, uh, at the January fifth, twenty twenty-three, the Park, Park and Recreation Advisory Board meeting, the board was tasked, uh, in accordance with resolution number two four nine nine, to discuss and put forth recommendations to council to name the new neighborhood park located in the Madison Park neighborhood. After discussion at that meeting, uh, that took, the, the discussion took street names and neighborhood identity into consideration. Um, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Committee puts forth to you uh, the following names in rank order, as they discussed for the council's consideration. Uh, one, Spartan Park. Two, Olympic Park. Three, Rhodes Park. And four, Aegean Park. Those were the top four that the council discussed in, in rank order, uh, to put forward to you. Uh, again, considering the Mediterranean, uh, nature of the streets in the Madison Park neighborhood and keeping with that, uh, theme.
Can you repeat the names, please?
Oh, first, Spartan Park. Second, Olympic Park. Three, Rhodes Park, as in R H O D E S Park. Uh, and fourth, Aegean Park.
I'll write it up on the board.
I think it was-
Didn't expect your, uh, choice of park names to make the mayor, uh, well up in tears and lose her voice, but wow.
Yes.
That's a, that's a wow factor right there. That's a, that's a wow factor right there.
My apologies. Again, I needed to sneeze. Okay, so I've got the names. Um, do we have any questions or comments from any council members?
My preference is number two, Olympic Park.
Um, number one, Spartan Park. It's kinda cool.
I will say, uh, I was for Aegean, but, uh, everybody liked Spartan at the meeting, so. I'll go with that. So, I vote Spartan.
Two for Spartan, okay.
Two votes for Spartan.
I am willing to go with whatever. Um, so I, I have no strong preference here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was leaning towards Rhodes. Sounds more, more friendly, but, uh, I'd also do Olympic Park.
Well, I'll tell you what. One of the schools I went to back in California. We were the, we were the Spartans. I vote for Spartans.
Madam Mayor, I, I move to approve Resolution Forty-three Twenty-three, approving, uh, the name, uh, Spartan Park for the new city park located at the corner of Porto Lane and, uh, Santa Cruz Lane located in the Madison Park Neighborhood.
There's a motion. Can I get a second? Seconded by Councilman Brown. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Spartan Park it is.
Thank you. Thank you, Brent.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda. Unfinished business. None listed. Item eleven. Yes. Item eleven, we've done that one at the beginning of the meeting. I just needed to mention that. And then item twelve, miscellaneous discussion. Councilman Campos.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll, I'll make this, this one quick. Um, Chief Roski, as a proud supporter of the Second Amendment, I've been buying a lot of firearms recently, and anytime I go, when we do a background check, the, 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 the counter guys typically say that Pasco tends to take a little longer than our other cities for the background checks, and I just hope and maybe you can give me some history. What is our, is our process different? Maybe I can help field some of those questions when I'm out walking around and just for personal understanding, so I know what to expect.
Yeah, let me get you a little more detailed report on kinda what that process looks like, but, uh, we are aware of that. Uh, let me get you an update on it. Typically, it's been related to staffing shortages in our records division. Um, those are, um, not the priority of record processing that has to get through the judicial system in a timely matter. Those typically fall back. Um, we do bring staff in on overtime to cover those, but let me get you more updated report on where it is today.
I, I appreciate that. I'm sure anybody in the community does too. Thank you very much.
Any other comments from any other council members? Seeing none. City Manager?
I just wanted to hear it. No, no updates tonight. Thank you, though, Mayor.
All right. There being no further, uh, comment under miscellaneous discussion. Moving on to our next item on the agenda. Item thirteen, executive session. We do have a need for executive session. Discussion with legal counsel about current or potential litigation per RCW forty-two point three zero point one one zero one aye for fifteen minutes, and discussion with legal counsel about legal risk of current or proposed action per RCW forty-two point three zero point one one zero one aye for ten minutes, a total of twenty-five minutes. It is nine fifty-five to return at nine, sorry, at ten, uh, twenty. Thank you. Other items on our agenda, this council meeting is adjourned. Thank you everyone. Have a great evening.